Pleasure be agents. To the right, United States of America, to the people who wish to dance, I want my nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I'm just turning my speaker down too, so I don't have to listen to myself. All right, citizen's statement and petitions, does anybody, anybody like to speak or anybody on the remotely want to address the board? All right, I don't have any correspondence.
I heard from someone that I just wanted to at least start, start the conversation with about, a question about whether there has been a violation with some earth removal on a property, so there's a, the town of Mendon general bylaws have regulations for earth removal for the, for the select board overseas, and there was a question as to whether the board had issued a permit, so I guess part of it is a question of process, and then also, there's some question about whether some of the town emails have been going through, through the website, so.
What's the, who's town emails?
So, you know, the, the portal on the town website that you can contact, so I guess I wanted to follow up and make sure that we've been receiving some of them, because I didn't see one that somebody thought they'd sent to the, the board.
All right, well, I, I on occasion receive them.
Yeah.
Directly.
Yes.
And it's pretty straightforward, if you go into the Mendon, mendonma.gov site, you can click on the various boards and committees and send a message, there is a way to do that.
Yeah.
And that is working property, so it has been. As far as talking about the permits, actually, the previous board, Lonnie, that Lonnie and I were on, talked about this, there was a, a bylaw that was passed over 20 years ago, because there was a, a piece of property in town where a, a great deal of topsoil was stripped off and moved out of town, so there was a bylaw passed at, at a town meeting, like they always would be.
Right.
That we would have to be notified and issue a permit if there was going to be any topsoil moved off of land, but at the same time, we actually discussed repealing it, because in, in most cases, you know, people own the land, they can do what they want with it, then in addition to that, if there's any kind of construction going on, they have to go in front of the planning board to get a, to get a permit, you know, to, to have a plan approved, but the, the short answer is, yes, there is still a bylaw in place, yes, if somebody wants it, they have to come to the town hall, usually ask Laura for an application, and then we approve it, and as far as I know, I don't think we've ever denied one, but most, most of the ones we've issued or talked about, in my memory, have been ones where there's already a plan in place, it's already been in front of planning, the planning board approved, which is why we talked about potentially just repealing that, but I don't know if you want to add to that.
Right, yeah, so, uh, uh, an approved plan, you know, from like a subdivision plan or something like that, allows for that, because you're moving, obviously moving types of materials around for when you're building houses or building commercial buildings, so anything that's approved by the planning board already is a, an approved plans for site plan review, they, that's kind of part of the deal. If somebody's stripping off materials off of their land, right, and the, the other part we talked about was repealing it or moving it over to the building department, because they come to us and they, they say, oh, we're gonna take this many cubic yards, and, you know, we say, okay, and you, I guess, you know, how many cubic yards?
Right.
It's not really our forte, whereas, we could, we pitched it over to the building department and had them do it through that process, then at least you have, you know, the building inspector, which is gonna know a little bit more about these things, that can, and then go and make an inspection if there's an issue, what was the address that was in question?
So it's on, it's, uh, 23 Cape Road, so the.
Is that Gasko?
Yeah, the, the, the back property.
The back property.
So there's been.
Well, I, I. So that, that was, so, I, just, I know the history, and I, I can actually see the, the owner of, of the property here is here, the, I don't know how deep you want to get into this right now, but I, I know that, that, that was an issue a long time ago, that that material was stripped off, I don't know that there's any current material being stripped off.
And there's been some, I've, I've seen some has been brought in, but that's a whole different matter.
There is some question about whether there has been some recent removal, so, but I'll follow up on it later on.
Okay, you know, the, the short answer, they were, which, which you were saying, was there a permit process, if anybody has a question, it's all public information.
Right.
They can send a message, and it is the building inspector right now, who's the enforcement officer.
Right.
So if there was any issue of a violation.
Well, that was one of the questions of whether that email was going through.
Yes.
We'll follow up on that.
Yeah, what we would do is just, if, if we heard about it, we would pass it to the, the enforcement officer, who would investigate and find out, and if not, there's really no mechanism of fines, it's just, we tell people, look, you've got to come do the, you have to stop until you bring us the permit.
Okay.
All right.
So just can I ask a question on that, then, are we, should we have a action item to see if a permit was ever issued, or if the building inspector's aware of any, maybe his enforcement officer, is he aware of, has he been asked about this, or do we want to get this message into his hands to?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I would like to do that, whether it's the board officially doing that.
Sure, the, well, the, the, the actual mechanism is they come into the office and Laura would issue the permit.
Right.
So the question would be, it's, it's on the record now, so we'll ask Laura to come back and let us know.
What?
How many permits have been issued and where they've been pulled, and.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. All right, I'm just gonna take item 13 out of order now, which is, discuss use of the town hall by the Boy Scouts on Saturday, February 4th, and Saturday, March 11th, for a four-hour period from 10 to 2:00, and I know we had a conversation last summer about a private party that wanted to potentially hold a wedding here, but in, in this issue, there's a, there are four different merit badges required to earn the Eagle rank, that the troop wants to run, and they'd like to use the building to hold some classes, and I would be, I told them I would be one of the.
We have to have a brief discussion, and then let human relations know what will be done, and then let you know, just keep everything official.
Jay, can you hit mute on your microphone? There you go. So, there would be four, there are four merit badges, and I would, I would be there for both of these days, and I, we already checked with, I, I think, I think that went to the whole board that, that the town hall hasn't been reserved, it's on a Saturday, it's open, so I, I don't know if, if we need a, I don't know, is, isn't, do we need a motion to do that, or can we just allow them to use the prop, use the, use the building? I know they also requested the community room at the, at the police station, and that's a separate process through them, and they're already, the police are already working on that, but is there any objection to the Boy Scouts meeting for those four hours on those two Saturdays?
No objection.
Any issues with insurance, liability, things like that?
Um, that's a good point, we actually, the Boy Scouts actually have a, a binder, and I'll have the town listed as additional insured, so that, so that, yes, the town will be indemnified by the Boy Scouts for it, so that'll be the condition of it, if that's, okay. All right. Consider highway organizational study and recruitment, which is number four in the packet. As you, I, I think you're aware, because we discussed before.
Do you want to wait for the call center?
Um, is he on, is he?
No, they won't be here until, they're making another presentation in another town at 6:30, so they're gonna log on after they don't have that presentation.
All right, well, then we'll, we'll pull number four, and we'll go to five, which is Keno monitor, which we received notification that an applicant had asked, who already has a Keno machine, to add a monitor onto their, onto their existing license, so I know it's, it's Gasko, 25 Cape Road, and is, is counsel on?
Not yet.
Okay.
She's running 10 minutes late.
Okay, let's, um.
Which was a few minutes ago.
Yeah, I know, I know the, the owner is here, right? Sir, would you like to come up? Hi, hi, welcome, welcome, thanks for coming in, so we received this request, the way it was explained to me by counsel, when I talked to her on the phone, was that this is an issue with the state, that the state would grant this, but that they look for acceptance by the, by the town, which is why it's in front of us, so I guess, could you just explain to us exactly how it's set up now in the store for Keno, and how it's gonna change with this monitor?
We have the lottery machine, and you can play all the numbers and Keno, this, the guy, the agent who comes, he said, you should put a monitor, I said, okay, put a monitor.
That is kind of up the corner like that?
Like when you go to bars and restaurants and some stores, they put a monitor, you play the numbers, and after, I think every two, three minutes, they come the result, you can wait, or you can take it and go, they just add the screen, this is all I know about it, so if you want, you can go, like some people, they scratch the ticket at the store, or they can play and wait to see if they win or not.
Do you have any plans to put in a counter or anything, or, or any kind of a combination for them?
I'm sorry?
Oh.
That is, that is a counter.
Yeah.
At the store where you buy.
Where you pay the, pay for the.
And that is where the coffee in the back, that's where people scratch.
Okay.
Their thing, so I was gonna ask the town later date if I can not put table for that, sell food, so if they want to play Keno and sell food, I don't know later on.
Okay.
But as of now, there, there is a counter like this, that it's empty, it's probably from here to miss, and behind the coffee machine, this big countertop, usually people go and scratch their ticket, not all the time, sometimes, you know, I don't really stay in the store too much.
Okay, so the only thing you're gonna do is add a monitor to what's already there?
They put a monitor, yeah, I think the lottery, they, they're pushing, and you, I see a little brochure, a roulette, okay, the odds are horrible, I hope nobody plays it, because if you go to the casino, you get 1 to 36, this one, 1 to 25, and they have 36 numbers, so only a fool will play it, so anyway, so they're pushing it, maybe they're gonna have a monitor, indie monitor that.
I, I don't think the guy that was convincing you to put the monitor up would like you to say what you're gonna say.
No, he just said, it's an addition to your business, we don't do much lottery, honestly.
Right.
And it's, it's a just, I guess, a lot of stores, and the state is pushing it for revenue.
Yeah.
So, the chances is to play more than one time a day, the Keno.
Keno goes up.
Is probably higher.
Yeah.
Because we have some people, they come and scratch ticket probably for like 15, 20 minutes, so probably meanwhile, they play some Keno too.
Okay, I'd ask counsel if you could just weigh in on this, or basically had the discussion you and I had during the week on the phone, about the, the scenario, and exactly what we would be doing by, by voting to approve this, or not approve this.
Certainly, good evening, and thank you, and I apologize for, for being late, so the way this process works is that the select board has the opportunity to agree with the license, or to object to the issuance of the license for this additional monitor, and they have 21 days to provide comments to the lottery, after a public meeting, which you're holding now, with the, the Lotto, the Keno applicant, to hear a discussion about, you know, the pros and cons, and what you might want to do, after this meeting, you may vote to either accept the application, at which point the process would end, and the lottery would go forward and process the application, or you could vote to object to the application, if you object to the application, and you would then request the hearing, the lottery would schedule a hearing, and, and, you know, make a determination. If you object, you should have particular reasons why you might object, you know, examples I've seen in the past have been things like increased traffic, you know, the location isn't suitable because of proximity to residences, schools, things like that, I'm not suggesting that, that those are reasons that you should find, I'm just saying that those are some examples, I also understand from colleagues who have done this for other communities, that typically, if the community objects, the lottery doesn't hold the hearing, and the process tends to end there, we have never actually had to go to a hearing, the licenses haven't actually been issued if the community objects, and you have until January 31st to object, the, the other thing your chairman and I discussed about was whether, if you wanted to allow the, the, the screen, but you might want to consider some conditions, that is certainly something I think you could communicate to the lottery within the same period, but you do not have the authority to impose conditions yourself, in this instance, the, the lottery is the ultimate licensing authority, you simply have the opportunity to participate in, and either object or not object to, to the process. Anything I missed, Mr. Chair, or any other questions that you all may have?
No, no, I don't think so, I just, I'd ask any members of the board to ask any questions they want, my, my only question would be, that whatever conditions already exist at the property, as far as the occupancy of the building, I mean, they already have a Keno license, so it's not, we're not granting them a new license, we're just allowing them to add this monitor, which might increase traffic, or, you know, increase the, the time that people spend betting, but I'm, I'm right to say that there's already, that, none of the other conditions we already have, as far as the occupancy of the building would change, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, does anybody have any other, any questions?
Not on the monitor, just because I, you have Keno now, I'm not sure what the monitor's gonna drive, it's different, but the ongoing discussion on serving food, that's a, that's a different.
It's a whole different.
To go to the health board, get, I've been thinking about that for two years.
But you're already, you said, you sell coffee in there, I mean, I've been.
Yeah, yeah, we have food license, but if you want to sell sandwiches.
I see.
I think you have to go to the health board, and somebody have to go to school.
Yeah, that's correct.
And, and stuff like that.
Right.
So I haven't found anybody want to work, really.
Nobody wants to work anywhere right now, so.
Nobody want to work.
I move to approve the issuance of the Keno license to add an additional Keno monitor for Gasko Fuel 25 Cape Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, has he shown up yet? Will we go back to?
He said seven.
Oh, you said seven?
Well, he's.
All right, well, let's consider appointment of Paul Lamar to the cultural council, Mr. Lamar here.
Thank you all, good night.
All right, thank you, thanks. Sir, do you want to come up?
Sure.
Welcome, thank you for willing to do this, can you just introduce yourself to us, and?
Sure, Paul Lamar, I'm a newcomer to town, I live on Applewood Lane.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you.
Very, very.
I was invited by Sandy Petralia last month to attend the, the meeting at the library I attended, actually, I'm in good company, I really enjoyed seeing what I saw, and I would, would like to join, get on, get on board with, with those folks, apparently there's a lot of people scrolling off because of the, the term limits, so I find myself getting close to retirement, and I want to have more time in the very, very near future, and I'd like to spend it in town.
All right, that's great, does anybody have any questions, or?
I do not, thank you for volunteering.
Sure, my pleasure.
Yeah, thank you very much, for a motion?
I move to appoint Paul Lamar to the cultural council for a term to, set to expire June 30, 2025.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, sir, welcome.
Thanks, folks.
Welcome to town, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next, we need to get rid of a junker.
Sorry, Paul, you just gotta see the town clerk this way.
Okay, thanks.
Alan, do you guys want to, you and Hank want to come up, or?
So I know there's a, there's a bylaw that requires our approval if we're gonna get rid of town vehicle, that's even one that's beyond its useful life, right? Can you just tell us about this?
Yeah, it's pretty beyond its useful life, it's a 93, it's, it's, wouldn't pass inspection, it just, we tried starting it last week, and it pretty much caught on fire, pretty much.
You sure you can't fix this thing?
You can fix anything, you can fix anything, it's pretty rotted, like I said, it's a 93, it's outlived its useful years for the town of Mendon, what we can get far, I don't know, I mean, I would just, I would, there is a mechanism online, I forget the name of it exactly, but I can send them the information, and they can put it on, and they see where we get far, I believe we're gonna get scrap, I think we're gonna get scrap value for it, but while we're here, we have actually two other vehicles that I didn't mention, that have been sitting out back, one of them for 30 years that I know of, that someone has shown an interest, it's an old army ambulance, again, we kind of kept it hanging around, we put wood in it as a little storage, it's, that could go, we might get a couple of dollars for that, again, we can do the same thing, put that out for bid, and we have the old 92 Ford, I believe it's a Parks apartment, but it's been sitting out back for, let's see, since a long time, we might as well just get rid of this stuff, while, you know.
Now, how many, how many different vehicles are there?
Three.
Three of them, can you, can you give us, do you have the, you must have the VINs somewhere, right? It's the best way to identify them.
The VINs?
Vehicle identification numbers of the three.
Yeah, we get the VIN numbers, the, that old army vehicle is, there's no title, there's no nothing.
Is this the one, the ambulance?
It's the old ambulance, there's a guy from Blackstone Street that restores all that, he showed an interest in it, and you can't just sell it to him, but I would just, I would just put it on, advertise it somewhere, you know, get a couple of bids for it, and just get rid of it, I mean, but they, they're just collecting mice right now.
Well, my only question is, in order to make this a, a valid motion, I know you asked about one, but there's actually three vehicles you want to get rid of, right?
Yeah, I get the titles for.
So what you should probably do is get the, get the veh, the three vehicle identification numbers, and have a motion for the three of them, and just vote to do it properly, unless somebody thinks differently, I mean, I'm, I'm, I guess I'd be looking, I'd look for a motion for all three of them, and if you have an issue, then we can bring it back to vote it with the VINs.
So we have a policy for a surplus for things under $2,500, but it specifically says not municipal vehicles.
Right, that's why we're here, right.
But if we're declaring it scrap, then.
Well, my issue is if, my, my understanding is with the, because we talked about this truck along, I mean, that ambulance, a long time ago, about getting rid of it, and to me, I think if you have the titles, what we should do is.
We don't have a title for that.
Well, you have the vehicle identification, everyone has a, every vehicle.
Yeah.
Has a VIN.
I would imagine.
I think what we should do is probably table this, because not gonna do it in two weeks, and bring it up to the next meeting.
Whatever.
And just give us the three VINs.
Yeah.
And then we can just make a motion to, to give us, you know, to give permission, if we're inclined to do so, to do that, you have a question?
Yeah, I would say, let's get rid of them, I'm just more curious about what the process is, is there a formal process through, we said, there's a website, and then you said you might advertise them, I'm just kind of curious about what the.
Well, the, if, if I can, if I can just suggest that, I, I mean, I've dealt with salvage vehicles for a long time, there is a way for us to reach out to Insurance Auto Auction or Copart, right, right in, you know, right, right in Mendon, it's right on Route 140, we could go to them, and if we have the vehicle identification numbers, and we can show that we own them, they'll actually take them on consignment, and they'll auction them off for us, and they put them on their site, and actually, it's international, I mean, I just was working with one last week that got sold, that went to the Ukraine.
There's no formal set place to go, we find the best place we want to go, and move them that way.
Throw it in his face.
It's fine, yeah, the, the.
In front of the highway department.
Yeah, that, that 93 truck is gonna have to get lifted on, it, the wheels don't turn, that, it's.
Well, the issue is if we, that's why I say if we deal with one of these, you know, one of these companies that, that sell, that sell scrap, like, you know, that sell these vehicles, they'll put them on their site, they put pictures on them, and it has a, and there are, there are buyers who look for all of this stuff, and it, it basically, the nicest part about it is, they'll come take it.
Wonderful.
And it's gone.
Come get it.
Right, so I would just ask, I'm gonna table this, just get the vehicle identification numbers, and send them to Laura, and, and we'll, you know, work it from there.
Not a big deal.
Sure, I'm sorry.
Where, where do the funds go, so assuming that they get sold?
It would split it up.
It would.
I mean, is it to the highway department, or?
It goes in the general fund.
Yeah.
Goes in the general fund.
That's a good question.
No, we, no.
Okay, get the VIN numbers.
Yeah.
No, took them off the road.
Right, thanks, thanks, Alan.
Not a problem.
All right, next, we have a, Phil McHenry, I think, has a, an update for us.
Yep, good evening, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, well, greetings from Vermont, I just want to comment on the last item there, just to say that putting my Green Communities hat on for a minute, any changes in vehicle inventory, we need to know about that for Green Communities purposes, tracking all the vehicles that the town owns.
Do you know if you have these three on your list already?
Uh, two of them sound familiar to me, I'm gonna be coordinating with Laura, she's gonna be taking over some of the functions for Green Communities, so.
What a coincidence.
Right, and she has a lot of that information already, because she pays the insurance bills, et cetera.
Okay, well, we'll make sure when she gets the, when Alan gives her the VINs, or she looks them up, that.
Right.
She'll put that hat on, too, and.
Exactly. So the housing update is very simple, it's just basically to give you a heads up, that the request for proposals that we've been working on for so long, for 52 Providence Street, is about ready to be issued, I did not send it to you, although I'd be happy to send it to you if anybody really wants to read it, just a quick recap is that the RFP basically describes all the qualitative aspects of the housing, and does not prescribe anything about how it's, how it's gonna be done, or what the product is gonna be, and it's completely up to the town's discretion, whether they want to accept any or all, or, you know, any proposal or no proposals at all, so we have a lot of control over what to do, and we'll learn a lot from the process, things that have happened recently, is that we do have access now to the well sites on the upper reaches of the property, because of an easement that was created across Muddy Brook Estates, off the cul-de-sac there, and going across open space and into 52 Providence, and, you know, the, this RFP has been reviewed by Mass Housing Partnership, and Town Council, and Jack Hunter, who's with us now, and we are in the process of trying to select candidates for a selection committee for, to review proposals, and then eventually, if there's bidders, they'll be recommended to the select board for, you know, to actually go into a contract, so I can field any questions. you know, to actually go into a contract. So I can field any questions. I can, uh, send you a copy of the document if you, if you would like it. Uh, otherwise, I just wanted to let you know that this is coming along, uh, very shortly.
Yeah. Bill, if you would please email that document, um, just to the, to the BOSS email address because.
Yeah, happy to do so.
She'll, Laura will put it into our SharePoint Drive so we all have access to it there.
Yep.
So we'll look at it in our.
Sure. And I recognize you have new members who might not be as familiar with, uh, what's going on here.
Does anybody have any question? All right. Well, thank you very much for the update, Sarah.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. So talk about number nine. You saw, we, we received a, an email that, uh, the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission needs a, uh, needs us to approve an estimate or a, um, estimated population in your packet number eight. And sent us an email from our town clerk that says the current population of Mendon is six thousand one hundred and eighty. And she estimates it's going to go up by about twenty by July. So she estimates a sixty-two hundred.
I move to approve the estimated population for Mendon as of July twenty twenty-three will be sixty-two hundred for Mendon's town clerk.
Is there a second? Second? Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. We, uh, great. So let's go back to, um, go back to number four. Highway organizational study and recruitment. Welcome.
Hello. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Good. Uh, my name is David Colton. I'm with the Collins Center and, um, we, we've made a proposal. We, we understand that you're interested in, uh, looking at your public works, our highway department, uh, organization and, uh, that you've had some questions.
Just to, yeah, just to. Just, just so everybody understands, um, as, to kind of refresh everybody's memory, at, at, um, at our annual town meeting last May, we voted to change the, uh, highway surveyor position from elected to appointed. And, um, our highway surveyor, um, is scheduled to, to retire on or shortly after his, um, three-year term is up, which is this year in May. And we were given a, uh, a grant by the state to do a study to see, uh, how we would, uh, move forward in, including, um, successfully recruiting a candidate. So we would have a professional process to have someone recruited. And that's where we, um, use the money to have you do this. So that, just so everybody understands, that's where we are and what's going on.
Right. And in, and an organizational study of the functions that fall within the department and whether or not there are more departments in the town which should be included to be expanded into a public works department to sort of centralize and become more efficient in services.
So does the grant fully cover the fee for the services of the proposal?
Yes. Well, you know what? I'll have the gentleman who's here, um, talk about that.
Okay, well, you know, we at the Collins Center, uh, I give you just, first, I suppose I should let you know who I am. David Colton, I'm with Collins Center. I'm a senior associate. I've been with the Collins Center since two thousand seventeen. Prior to that, I was thirty-five years in local, working in local government, um. Over twenty of that was actually in public works. I was committal to public works in the city of Quincy and the director in Milton, in the town of Milton. So, um, I, I head up the, uh, public works and water and wastewater group here at the Collins Center and, uh, doing this kind of organizational study is something that we've done many times before. We, we like, we take a look at your, uh, first of all, we gather a lot of information from you, what you're currently doing, what services you provide, how you finance those services, who provides those services, how they're delivered. Uh, and, and of course, you know, are there any, uh, services you're contemplating, expanding, um, or contracting? And we would gather that information. We would, uh, gather your budget information. We set up a list of, uh, folks that we would want to interview to talk about the, uh, the, the highway situation, the public work situation in, in Mendon. The, uh, we would then develop a list of comparable municipalities. We'd work with you to, to develop that list and take a look at what other people are doing, what the other practices are in other towns that are similarly situated. In, in, uh, in terms of, uh, your, your demographic. And we, 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 we will, uh, we would then produce a draft report that would have, uh, our, what we find. We, you know, what we find a situation to be in Mendon, what we find to be the situation with, uh, common practice in other communities and best practices in general. And we would make a series of recommendations. We, uh, based on, you know, our, our professional opinion. At the same time, we understand that you are, as you said, you're looking to recruit somebody who have a retirement coming up and, um, my colleague, Mary Akardi, who, who couldn't be here tonight, um, is, is our HR, uh, heads up our HR division. I would, I've worked with her on many occasions. Uh, we could be helpful in, once we have a, uh, understanding of what, how you want to structure, if you want to make any changes in the structure, we would take, take a look at what, uh, a, an appropriate job description would be for that, um, for that department head. And, um, certainly we'd be able to help you. Uh, we do, we do recruiting, um, to be able to help you identify candidates for that. But that in a nutshell is kind of an overview of the services we offer. Um, and, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions or to the extent I can.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I have one just to, just to amplify what, what Elena had asked. In your, uh, proposal under subject, under item two, project deliverables, it says, "Report detailing finding and recommendations and successful recruitment." So you are planning to help us recruit, successfully recruit somebody?
Yes.
Okay. Sure, Mike. Go ahead, Mike. Got it.
David, just a quick question. You mentioned comparable communities and I think you said you'd work with us to identify them, but I'm just wondering, would you come to the table with your view of who the comparable community should be across the state?
Yeah, we, we would, we would take a look at, uh, your demographic and then we would, we would propose a list. Many times towns have a list that they use, uh, regularly and they like, you know, they like to use the same list over and over. We might, uh, suggest, if you do have such a list, we might suggest some tweaking it a bit and adding or subtracting from it. But, um, yeah, if you don't have such a list, we could create one for you and have a discussion about that. I, we, I'd want, I, I'd want to become, before I did that, I'd want to become more familiar with your demographic, uh, than I am. Sitting here today before I, you know, came up with the list, but we would look up, uh, at career, uh, you know, population statistics, uh, financial statistics, size of budget, um, property evaluations, those kinds of metrics to, uh, put you in a group of communities that had similar characteristics.
Well, I mean, what I find is our list tends to change depending on what project we might have. So I'd be curious to see what a third-party evaluation would look like.
Yeah, you know, these lists need to be tailored to what you're doing because some, some, uh, some towns, some comparable lists are appropriate for financial matters and others for organizational matters, matters, for example.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Questions?
I'm looking for it. That was the last, that's the last. That's why.
What's the timetable on, on this? Oh, there it is.
I don't have the schedule in front of me. I apologize.
There isn't.
It's in there, right? Yeah.
Looking like final report is in May or around sometime.
Yeah, we understand that you do have this, uh, impending retirement, so we'll do everything we can to get you it. Get you the information you need before that happens.
They pulled that out of the old one, right?
This is who they don't talk to.
Right. Oh, wait, we talked about, yeah, I sent them an email. All right, I'd be looking for a motion.
I move to approve the Collins Center Highway Organizational Study and Recruitment Proposal.
Second. Any other discussion? Do you have, Alan, do you have any questions before we, uh? All right. Motion been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you all.
All right. Thanks very much.
All right. Good night.
Okay. Consider reappointment of Peter Denton to the Agricultural Commission.
I move to reappoint Peter Denton to the Agricultural Commission for a term to expire six twenty twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Weird appointment. Why is this?
I, good question.
We just, oh, did we?
I, I think, I think it was because, when it was supposed to be done and.
Ethics was.
And ethics was, he just recently finished his ethics, so, so we're.
He's cleared for taking.
He's clear for, yeah, right.
Yeah.
Was there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, number eleven, uh, bylaw requires that we open the, uh, the annual town meeting warrant seven weeks before the meeting.
I move to open the May fifth, twenty twenty-three annual town meeting warrant. The warrant will close in March fifteen, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And now we're on to the, uh, FY twenty-four budget review. Would the members of the FinCom who are here want to come up to the table and?
Hey folks, how you doing?
Mike Craig, are you on? I can't see from the.
I think Nick is on.
I make it tonight.
Okay.
Winter, something with the sun. Hey, I know Mike and Mandalier is trying to get on now.
Yeah, I saw that, his email. I sent to the link. I think you sent the link.
Yeah, I forwarded it to his work email as well.
And above Nick, because I think you, you guys are posted, right? Did you post for tonight?
Yeah.
So Nick, you want to call your meeting to order? Maybe he stepped away because. Well, you're not going to, I don't think we're going to make any.
You remember how to call a meeting to order?
Yeah, I can call a meeting to order.
Call the FinCom meeting to order on, uh, seven fifteen on, uh, one of the days today. It's January eighteenth, seven fifteen.
All right, thanks very much. So we have, um.
I got to start first.
Yeah, sure.
So that we can talk about just the bigger picture of the budget before we start doing the departments. I'm just going to share my screen. Make sure everything is working right. Success. Great. So we've done a lot of talk the last couple of months about how this budget is going to be different than previous years because of our new financial system. So just want to take you through very briefly, sort of what you're going to be looking at this year when you see the department's budgets comes in, because they are different. And some of the ninety, eighty percent are exactly the same, but some of them are different. And so I've tried to highlight and flag where they're different and then I'll show you how you can sort of analyze the data in the new, in the new way to really kind of track the changes. So this is just a general overview of what the new budget will look like. The way it's structured will have categories, general government, public safety, education, public works and facilities, human services, debt service and benefits and insurance. And most of these are the same as in previous years, but there are a lot of changes you'll see in general government. Um, there are changes around the Finance Committee Reserve, um, a line for accountant auditor. There's a human resources line now. There's an IT line now. There's a line for public buildings and property maintenance at long last. In public safety, there's now inspectional services, which is something we've been working towards for a number of years. Tree Warden has a slightly different name, but it's combined there. You can see. In the education section, uh, we now will have a specific, um, subgroup for Norfolk Aggie when their amounts come in, since they'll be built separately. We, for public works and facilities, we now have just highway and streets. The traditional snow and ice, street lighting, we'll have waste collection and disposal, which comes out of health. Water cemetery, those are the same as before. Human services now, Board of Health, Council on Aging, Veteran Services, Recreation and Parks as two separate groups. Historical debt service and then benefits and insurance, which is pretty much the same. So when we're talking about the departments, we'll go into what those differences really look like in terms of what matters. For, for our perspective so that you know and we can really get into it, um, like, without getting too far, if you look at this, you all have access to this spreadsheet. I've tried to color code the tabs so you could follow along and click along on your own if you want. This green chart that says new budget lines is basically how you can compare what the old budget looked like to the new budget. So the departments were really great this year. I was able to send out one link to one spreadsheet and they updated all of their own data within their spreadsheet. So everything is real time that's in here, including their notes about any particular variances or anything related to their budgets. So the left side of the sheet that with the highlight in yellow and those lines are the old KVS traditional lines that you're used to seeing in the budget. And the ones on the other side now that are marked in blue, that's the new budget structure in the new Springbrook system with new lines. So there's line consolidations. Um, and again, as we go through individual departments, we'll be able, I'll, I'll track them for you so you can see exactly where everything ended up. So it's not so overwhelming. Um, but for, from a, for a data analysis standpoint, saved in the folders right now as well are printouts in the system from Springbrook that look like, so if you go into the usual folders where we've been and you go into the budget, you'll see that there are printouts which we are dating by the day, right? So you can track the changes. And this is what the printout looks like from the system, right? Hopefully it crossed your fingers, Mike. I trust when. So it's, so you can see why we are still, you know, utilizing a spreadsheet for our analysis because we don't have the previous year data in the system at this moment, right? But we do have all of the new requests and then the estimated for twenty, adopted right here for twenty-three. So this bottom line in the, in the system in Springbrook matches what we're going to look at sort of on the spreadsheet side as we sort it out. Obviously, when we come back here next year to do this again, it's all going to be in here, right? Like that's, that's the next piece of it. But for this particular year, I had to, I'll use your terms, map it right from the old system into the new system, line by line and consolidate the lines. And once we get past this budget, we'll try to figure out a way to import that, that old data into the other, for, for history. But for now, we'll primarily be using this yellow tab for our budget meeting discussions when we meet. Okay? So when you're looking on your own or you're at, at your meetings or you're at home and you're looking, this is where you'll get the information that you're really traditionally used to seeing. So these are the actuals from the previous years, right? Budget, the adopted, the adjusted, and then the yellow is the department requests that they put in directly. And then their variance detail on the side, right? And then the tracking. So. So, you can see everything that's here, right? And like I said, as we get into some of the budgets more, because a lot of the numbers will change, then I'll get into exactly why and how and what changed there, and you can see why there's. So this year, unlike some of the previous years, it's definitely harder to look at a line and say, well, that, why is this one six percent, and that one's three percent, and that one's two percent? But we know the whys, so we can go through them when we get to that point.
Two quick questions, that report you showed us only has the proposals, not the actuals, right? It, it, there's no, it's just the proposed budget that we're gonna approve.
Yeah, it has, it has the adopted budget for twenty three. And it has the proposed and array now requested and proposed, right? So like requested it will be theirs, and they'll stay theirs, the departments, and then we'll change the proposed once we select things.
Right.
Right, and then they'll be in approved, right, and then town meeting adopted.
Okay. I'm going back to our last meeting, we can take that offline, more about the, the tracking of revenues as an example, when you start looking at the report you posted from the last meeting.
Yep.
It's, what's interesting is you, the budget's only gonna look at what our proposed FY twenty four revenues are, but it does not take into account any assumed collection of previous year tax revenues, or does it?
Well, it doesn't make, so when we, we had the revenue meeting a couple of weeks ago, and you want to go back over there. So there is data that's estimated on the revenue side that is looked at in order to make recommendations by the financial team for twenty four.
Right. Would twenty four include prior year tax collection? Because I'm just thinking about the expenditure and revenue report you posted from, since our last meeting, when I look at it, it's, it's kind of interesting when I look at it.
Well, prior year tax collection wouldn't necessarily, necessarily change unless some sort of outdated amount came in past the point, but when we run a revenue report, it's going to show every single line, yeah, I mean, so much detail.
When you look at variances on that other report, it's actually, it's not a variance against the proposed budget, it's a variance against collections from prior years, so it, it has more to do with the, the tracking than the, the setup. So this is fine for setup, I'm good with this, when we start to manage it, you see how the revenues are coming in, you might be, you, your variances could be skewed based on the way the old report was, is produced, that's all.
So I didn't look, well, let me look at what I, so I also.
No, 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 I am, I am off track, so the chair should be pulling me back right now, because it really is not.
We all know what the, what, what the success rate of that is.
That's only first question.
Yeah, just, well, I want to take a look, because I did.
Maybe your last, I don't know.
Revenue and expense reports, so let's look at the one from January. So, what he's referring to is that there's a million lines here, right? But it really looks like the only one that's tracking is the twenty twenty three line. So, I don't know that, I mean, it could be because there was no change in any of the other lines, right? So it's.
Yeah, and I was really just looking at, when you look at the, the, the revenue for property, you've got some prior year money coming in that may or may not be part of your expected revenues for FY twenty, and so, we might actually be running ahead of forecast, but this, that type of report, the way it's structured, doesn't show you that.
Yeah, but if, if money's gonna come in from prior year, it's just, it's not relevant to reuse that year, correct? It's gonna end up in general funding coming in the free cash following, right?
Right, but if you're, uh, uh, this gets back to creating the budget versus managing the budget. If you've got real time money coming in, intra-year, you have a better sense intra-year of potentially excess revenue you weren't expecting.
Well.
Or, it's masking the fact that your proposed budget revenue is off because you're pulling in this money you weren't anticipating, and it's, it's an offset.
Each, because we're all, because we're such a high percentage is residential, and we have a pretty much constant issue with how much we don't collect, and every year we know what the actual was, because it goes down into free cash, so it if, if there was a, a major issue, it would be with rep, because everything at the beginning of the budget is proposed, right? Because we haven't collected anything yet. But Lonnie's right, it goes into the general fund for the next.
Not an issue.
Right.
Per se, it's a matter of the way that data is being presented is could, could.
But the short, the short answer, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, is that this new package will be able to track revenue.
Yeah, it, it is tracking revenue. So, from last week, from the revenue present, well, from two weeks ago, the revenue presentation. So there are estimates in here based off of twenty two actuals, so really the only impact really that it would have besides spend maybe mid-year, right, in tracking. We, after a certain point, besides the potential changes to, like cherry sheet numbers, the revenue is pretty set.
So.
Right, that, for the budget, like nothing would dramatically change that would impact planning for twenty four. But we definitely could track to change spend in twenty three, right? And it does that, it's doing that.
I guess when I think of the new system, I'd love to see how these reports are gonna be designed and generated going forward. When you start to say variance and things like that, it's a very specific connotation that, just want to make sure it's, it's accurate to the, to the average person looking at it. Like I said, that's, that's, that's not even the real question, the real question would be that gen, that building maintenance line item that's new? Is that gonna allow you to consolidate all building maintenance costs and contracts to a single line item for the town, or is every department gonna have their own?
So most departments already have their own. So that particular building maintenance line, when we get there, is basically the subcategory that's pulled out of one ninety nine, which was a non-account before. The other town, other town miscellaneous account, so now it's just, that account no longer exists. And so they have been siphoned off into smaller groups in order to better account for what they actually are.
So, but the plan is to have every department have their own building maintenance, contract, HVAC, all that good stuff?
Well, they do, I mean, the.
I know they do, but it's the plan to continue to let that happen versus consolidate it to a single line item for the town.
I think it would depend on where they currently are in their contracts, I'm not sure where the police are right now with theirs, they would be fairly new. We don't have a substantial HVAC contract, so.
But that, that's just an example that I saw, because certain line item budgets, based on state statutes, allocation is driven by the size of the budget.
I, what I.
We put to, a lot of cost into a given budget, you might be inflating what it needs to be, in terms of how money needs to be allocated.
And I, I think we're getting into how, how things are gonna change, and, and I would just.
Yeah, I'm just asking, do I think it will change, or do we think the current state is the current?
The, the short, the short answer is, right now, it's, that's not gonna change, but as we're all aware, the Division of Local Services had promised us a report by Thanksgiving. And I was told three weeks ago that we were gonna have a meeting within a month with the financial team to go through, through it, right now, it's being reviewed by by the team that was here that did it by a supervisor to approve it, and then we're gonna have it, and that's one of the issues that's supposed to be discussed in that report, so the short answer is it's not changing right now, things are gonna, the, the way they have been. But the plan is to, we're gonna have to vote on the report to adopt or change based on what their recommendations are. Is that fair?
Yep.
So, just to give you a big picture of where we are financially, it's very early, right? We always, it's very early, a lot of the numbers that we have are larger numbers are, are still estimates, particularly around health insurance, the schools numbers, those numbers are still going to change, okay? What I can tell you is based upon the requests, we've, everyone has been incredibly conservative this year, there are not a lot of requests, most of these budgets are level service, there's only a handful of changes that anyone is looking for this year, which is great. So, right now, we have a budget that's up about three percent with some estimates in it. And right now, including the requests, we still have an additional two hundred and forty seven thousand dollars available unallocated. I mean, I would anticipate that may change either way, but that's where we are at this moment as we come in to start the budget, right? I would say, there's, like I said, there's only a couple of requests, just big picture wise, to get an idea. Because, you know, you need the context in order to really judge these, when, like, Bill is here to talk about fire, right? What does that mean when we're talking about? So, what, like, we are really in a solid position right this moment, right? But, so we have only three department requests, and then two other ones that I put around salaries and buildings. Everything else is just three, fire, one from recreation, and one from the library, that's it. So, you can see on the side, the majority of the departments, like, very little increase at all for this year, so that's really great. And then, these are the drivers, right now, I put, wrote next to them whether they're an estimate or a confirmed number, right? You can see sort of where our money goes, right? Our budget went up five hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, this is where that, where that is, right? And we'll get further into it, but so, as you're weighing, you know, the merit of each request, just, this is where you go to sort of figure out what's what and where this, it's in there, it's marked, it's, you can see it, it's red, okay? Okay. Go ahead.
Just a quick question, when you said we're, does the, we have two hundred and forty seven unallocated, right? So we have a placeholder in, I know the big money is questionable, insurance and school, but there's a line item in for the school, an assumption, a starting point?
Right, so my starting place with the school, which, so, the Norfolk Aggie portion of their budget is gonna become out of their budget. I was unable to obtain a specific number of how much that would be, so I'm anticipating it right now at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right? So I have removed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from there, I have currently allocated not gonna say the fifty fifty word. Currently giving them that number, I've subtracted from their previous year budget, a hundred and fifty thousand, and giving them, gave them the fifty number, that's what they have right now.
Guys, want to make sure there's, there's a foundation there, and like, the insurance is probably very conservative in terms of, we know it's gonna be.
I, I put it at ten.
Yeah.
I'm hoping for the best, but if you, like, as you can see on these drivers, this retirement, Worcester County Retirement, this is a confirmed number, this is a hundred and twenty five thousand dollar increase.
That's confirmed.
Confirmed, and this is, I think I mentioned last time too.
Great.
This is a six, sixty one percent increase in the last four year for retirement based upon the age and types of benefits we provide to employees that need to be examined, right? But that's for later date. That, so, those, those are the types of numbers, and you can anticipate that MRSA is going to have an equally high and scary number, right? So, those are the types of things. Okay. And with that.
Does anybody have any general, any more general questions about the budget process or what she's covered so far, before we start to get into these particular departments?
It's a nice spreadsheet.
Would you characterize the estimation you made for Norfolk Aggie as conservative?
So, I, I only had one conversation with Jay about it, and I swore he said a hundred thousand. But when, during our emails back and forth, he couldn't, couldn't come in, and then Maureen had said that she would provide me with their data from last year as a starting point. And when we met, we didn't do it, so it's kind of up in the air, so I put one fifty, it's a swag.
All right.
I, really, and they don't really know.
Confirm till late.
Yeah, right. We won't know about education budgets this year into, almost into April, right? Right now, they're scheduled to come in on March fifteenth, but they won't really even know on March fifteenth, which is why it's sort of good to see, keep some money just for the side.
Especially this year because of the new governor.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I was tempted to put this excess just into FinCom reserve as a placeholder for now, so that we know where it is, right, as we get further along. But, you know, we'll see, right? Like I said, lot, we don't really get to start making serious decisions until March, so this is just data at this point.
All right. So let's start with the Board of Assessors, ladies, do you want to come up? You guys just kind of move over one and just give them.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Just to start, as of January thirtieth, I'm committing nine hundred and ten thousand dollars in excise bills to the Treasury Collective. There's, there's some good money coming in there. So, at this point, we level funded everything except our mapping line, and I think we discussed this last year, that the maps are increasing, I was able to hold them down to about twelve fifty five last year, but I can't do it this year. And again, this is all estimates, because it, it's determined by how much I get, as far as what needs to be mapped, how many subdivisions, how many eighty one P plans come in. So I have several today to be giving to them, he's going to be coming, CMR PC rep is coming on either Monday or Tuesday of next week to pick up my maps, but we won't know for a while how much it's gonna be until they figures out.
So you don't have any idea what the percentage increase might be?
No, because, again, it changes from year to year on how much we have to have mapped.
Right.
So, last year, they wanted to charge us a little over fourteen hundred, and I was able to negotiate it down, but I can't, I could only do that for next year.
Can you board our topic?
Just a little bit.
Yeah, might be.
Right down here.
No, no, I'm expecting, again, I'm only asking the six hundred, will you take me to fourteen hundred? Right now, I have eight hundred.
Yeah, that's better.
So I'm just asking to go to the fourteen hundred, I hope that we hold it at that, we'll hold it at that. Or, take money out of other areas of our budget to pay for, which was what we've been doing. Okay. All set?
Can I have any questions?
Just, right, that's the issue.
The conversation that Mike was talking about earlier, what was, last year was it like seventy thousand that came in additional to the budget? From, from, from Y twenty two?
From new growth?
From new growth, yeah.
Yes, probably, well, actually, it was, I think, over a hundred thousand.
Was it over a hundred?
It was over a hundred thousand more.
But the estimate you gave us hasn't changed from what you gave us a short time ago, right?
I mean, I'm hoping, again, that I bring in a lot more, because hence, you have that increase, I mean, you were able to, we need, we really needed it this past year.
Yeah.
And it filled in a couple of holes, gaps, and where it was coming, so it's good to have that conservative.
I agree.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Bye, everybody, yes.
Chief Kessler, do you want to come up?
Good evening, good evening.
Chief.
So, uh, just kind of from a summary level, there's really, uh, this is somewhat of a level service budget. We'll hit the operating expense side first. But, like everybody in the world, or at least in the United States, we're getting pressurized with rising costs as well. You know, from the gas and diesel fuel for the trucks, our medical supplies continue to, to go up. The, the more common items we use range from seven percent to seventy percent increases over the past year. We are trying to use another vendor, slightly better pricing, but they're finding that the products are a little bit more inferior, they're not, they don't work as well, so we're trying to balance that out, but I, I just, I think across the operating expenses, you know, I boosted it ten thousand dollars on the year, I think it's about seven percent, just to try and keep up with, with the rising costs that we're getting hit with. It's on the maintenance side as well, you know, hourly rates for, for the, the maintenance worker going up. Sort of the testing and service on the pumps, so. Fill that in. On the salary side, I bounced up the, the overtime, it's, it's purely a calculation based on the, the number of leave hours that each employee has, a, a guesstimate of two sick days a year for each employee, training time, and then callback time. And even the callback time, we're using, I think it's twelve hours a month per person, so it's not a significant amount. And in a straight calculation out, brings it up to that one twenty six number. This year, we're at a run rate to just short of one twenty as of right now. So, based on our current run rate and doing those, that projection based on hours, it's pretty close. I mean, obviously, we do what we can to try and manage that. What makes it a little bit more difficult, at least in trying to provide the services, that it's harder now for us to find on-call personnel because of the amount of training that needs to be done, and, and honestly, the demographics of the town. I mean, I can get people who live twenty, thirty minutes away, love to be a call firefighter, but the tones go off, you don't want to wait for them to drive the twenty to thirty minutes, so we are relying a little bit more on our full-time people as well coming back. So that's what's driving that. The bigger nut to crack here, not to crack, but the explanation, Kim helped to crack the nut, I guess, but, uh, I have after a couple of years, two to three years of, of, we'll call it a disagreement with Worcester County Regional Retirement. That's been resolved in this past September, I was notified of how much credible service that I have from, from my on-call time. And I do hit the maximum percentage for retirement in October of this coming year, of this year. I also found that it's, it's, I just don't understand it, that the longer you. I just don't understand it that the longer you stay beyond hitting that maximum amount, your pension actually is reduced. And it just seems crazy. I mean, your end date's fixed. We don't know what it is, but it's fixed. And if you're shortening that time, you would think that your pension would actually maybe be a little higher. But so you basically are almost working for nothing or almost penalized for staying longer. Now, we do know we have the shared service agreement with Blackstone. That does go through the end of June of 2024. So that's kind of my plan at this point is to to stay into next spring and and try and get through the end of that, assuming that that agreement stays in place.
Chief, now that this has anything to do with the budget piece, but I know we had a discussion about how we executed that that agreement so it wouldn't negatively impact your retirement. Have you got the answer of of that impact as well?
Yeah, so this agreement and and we were able to, in the agreement, do the wording correctly to make to make that additional compensation be pensionable.
Okay. And that's all been figured in?
Yes, and honestly, that's one of the reasons to for me personally to stay until the end of that is because it does continue to help my pension just because of the three year, the highest three year calculation. So in preparation for, I did inform the town administrator while it's not concrete yet, it's like 99.999% sure that by September 24, I'll be retiring and and trying to do a succession planning. We did this down in Blackstone. One of the reasons I went there was to to help develop them. But we just recently appointed a deputy chief down in Blackstone with the intent of work, me working with him so that depending on what the towns want to do, whether they want to continue with a shared service agreement or not, they would have somebody in place to to be the fire chief down there. And as part of this agreement, we had my on call deputies backfilling me 12 hours a week, kind of along the same lines. But with the the grant that the town administrator was able to get as part of the shared service, to me, it seems to make sense to bring on a deputy chief, a career deputy chief like Blackstone did effective July 1st or thereabouts for me to work with over that next eight, nine, 10 months as well and just to make that transition smooth. So, you know, I can hand them the key to the car and walk out and and the department will continue to function as it has been for the past few years.
Right, and in full transparency, part of the language of the grant involved me saying that we were going to look towards hiring a deputy like Blackstone had just hired, you know, to to help with the succession planning. So we did receive $63,000 in funding related to this in particular. And so if we were to apply that 63,000 to the FY 24 budget, it would cut the cost down. The only cost that we have remaining from this would be the the benefits cost potentially and then a little bit of the salaries cost. But the trade off is, right? Chief will tell you that if his budget is currently built with the deputy position in it, if we remove the deputy position, he needs to fill that with overtime to continue doing what he's doing now. So there's a difference between costs of about $5,000 between bringing the deputy on now and for FY 24 and it's about 25,000 and change for the overtime. So it's that's where they're at. And then I want to say this word like, but when Bill drops off for 25, that'll level out again because well, then they'd be another person in place. And then, you know, we'll talk about potential other possibilities of him staying on and helping us in other capacities, maybe.
Is that 5,000 just in salary?
For the it's overtime, right?
Right.
It's the backfilling.
Yeah, it's.
So it doesn't take into effect the difference between the insurance and retirement and OPEB, all the other?
Well, so right here on this on the request page, this very top bullet. So is basically this issue, which is he's got about 100 in there for salary. And he'll tell you that's what they're doing. They they're hired someone at 100,000, right? You know, 80,000 in Blackstone, but they're allowed to get overtime. So realistically, it's closer to 100,000 to get that position in place. And then our benefits estimate right now for family plan is about $23,000 and change. Just so you see that number, that might change when I get the actual numbers next weekend from Maya. But so if you take those numbers, reduce it by the grant, it's 30,000 for the going forward with the deputy. And then the 25 is what he would need if we don't do the deputy.
Just more curious about, are we committing that this deputy chief is will be the chief upon your retirement? Is there any long term commitment to this individual?
That would be the intent. It would be my intent on that person coming in because I would work closely with them and you would.
So we would we be doing an external search for the next chief in all intents and purposes?
Well, I'm comfortable with the on call deputy that we have now. And I believe that he has the capability to fill this position to to be the next chief. And I and I certainly don't want to talk about potentially other candidates, but there's been many municipalities trying to hire fire chiefs recently, and it's very difficult. The town of Grafton went through two separate assessments in in trying to to hire and ended up taking somebody inside who was a career captain at another department. Our on call deputy is a career captain at another surrounding.
Understood. I mean, I think this is bigger than just your FY 24 budget. We're talking about a long term commitment. I just want to kind of make that distinction.
At least I find I find that that there's a high level of comfort with the, you know, not waiting until you have a crisis to figure it. You're you're right about it's it's a commitment. But the idea that we have a succession plan in place and we're grooming somebody and we're being proactive about it, you know, is a positive as long as it's the the right person. I know any other way to figure it out than have them doing the job and training for it. You know, so.
Right, and and it's very important from an organizational perspective, just to to show as what I'm trying to do down in Blackstone is developing a whole officer corps and then even the firefighters and trying to get them to aspire to be officers, especially the ones that really want to. And to to show them that there is a there's a growth within the organization. It is so hard. I've had almost from the time I've been in Blackstone, we've had just about a position open constant because when I started in the fire service, you were in line waiting for an opening in order to get in. Today, we're taking people who if they have the EMT certification and are enrolled in paramedic school, that's great. Then we'll send you to fire school, too. We can't get experienced people to fill these jobs. So I think, you know, showing that we can do this within the organization is is important from a longer term perspective.
Now, the idea that 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 you said, you know, Blackstone has hired somebody as a deputy and you're looking to hire somebody as a deputy, that's assuming that we're not going to continue a joint.
Actually, the the beauty for it in my eyes is it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
Because I'll tell you, you know, honestly, when I went to Blackstone, the first three to four months were extremely difficult on me personally. It was it was very hard and it was a lot of work. I think if you're gonna go continue going, that the towns want to continue going the shared service route, you really need to have that second person in charge, that that number two in each organization. Because what was happening, I mean, I'm trying to split my time between. So if I'm saying doing a half a day here and a half a day in Blackstone, I'm not there consistent, especially in trying to develop. You take two steps forward and one back and two forward and one back. I think you really need that consistent leadership within the department. And then if you do do a shared chief, it's, you know, it's at more of the the higher administrative level and planning.
But to follow to follow Mike Goddard's point, if if you are the chief and now there's a deputy chief in each one of these towns, if we want to continue that process or continue that practice of having a shared one, it would presumably be one of the two. And then you'd have to find somebody to take the place of wherever you step or you would come in, right?
Or
Or.
we might find a long serving, part time chief that might stay on and continue to, you know.
Lose his pension, right?
This area, no, it's 980 hours a year they're allowed. I mean.
Well, that's true. That's yeah, that that's true. Yeah, you're right.
I mean, it really depends on, you know, how fast these two communities really take the next step.
How many storms there are that year.
So I mean.
I think the position makes sense.
Sure.
I'm just thinking of a separate question is how do you fill the position?
Right.
And I am always going to give somebody internal probably some some benefit of the doubt that that person's probably best to progress into that position. But I also want to make sure we're not limiting our scope first because that's potentially the future chief. I want to make sure we spread a net, not to negate anybody, but I'm not sure I wouldn't be looking at more candidates to fill a brand new position we're creating.
Yeah, but what you're saying, but what you are saying is you've got that second in both places is what's happened, so it's all good.
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
Can I ask a question totally off topic that has to do with equipment? I'm just not sure if you it's in your space or not. But there was an article in the Globe this past Sunday about I think it was driven from the whole Buffalo Bills player dropping on the field and CPR and things like that. And somebody asked, do we have AEDs in town? Are people properly trained for CPR, things like that? Because all articles had to do with you got four minutes to react or things go south, potentially go south. So I was just curious, do we have any of those automated defibrillators, I think?
Oh, yeah, they're so we have AEDs on the equipment.
Yeah.
I have one in my car.
Yeah.
The cruisers, I believe.
But it but it would be strictly public safety personnel would have those. You wouldn't have anything.
There's some in the library.
That's my that was my question because I I thought they were in the library, thought the senior center had it.
The police station, Mike, too.
Police station, chief, Dave, we have this. Now, what about what? And there's a lot of, I know that the Catholic Church in Upton has one right in the in the lobby, but do we have one in the police in in town hall somewhere and in?
Yes, I believe there's one in the cabinet right at the bottom of the stairs.
That's my question. So it's right at the bottom of the stairs here.
Do folks know how to use them? I know some are somewhat automated per se.
Really good nowadays where, yeah, you literally press the button. It talks you through and and there's pictures on the pads of where to put them on on them on the face. As long as you're not real timid and and they're really, they're they're foolproof.
But we have one at our gym.
They've come down in cost now to you can get a fairly decent one for 1,000 to 1,200 dollars.
But it it does bring up the point. If you if you don't know it's there and you're not here and Dave's not here, the question is at the bottom of these stairs, it's it's on the wall there right when you walk in.
Can I follow? Can I follow? I'd love to get an inventory because I think I have a response to the person that asked the question and sort of like itemizing where they are would be a good thing for folks to.
Yeah, you know, we can, I'll have somebody. I have my admin send out an email to the departments. They don't go through us. I mean, we don't buy them for the department unless you want to give me more money in the budget.
Well, that's why I brought up under the budget aligned administration. You might need to buy more, so.
We'll get a list.
Is there anybody monitoring expiration dates or batteries on that?
So the way I understand them, I know that at our gym, there's a guy that comes in and checks it once I, I think.
Yeah, and we we the fire department right now do not go out and check the wall. The batteries, they're typically will change. There's a there's a site on it'll change to an error message. But yeah, the pads are that's that's a physical check. But that's something I, I mean, we can take that on and we'll get the list of where they are.
Provides them or isn't it a service you pay for essentially? Or do you just buy them yourself and stick it on the wall?
Oh, you buy them and stick it on the wall.
So again, you're whoever you buy it from, like your your gym, CrossFit has them. They may pay a service. I I don't know.
They must be paying a service.
Yeah, right, yes, right. What about the?
It's a random guy, he's not a firefighter.
Yeah, there's a the fighter, the the do you have a contract or? So Jack's job is to. Is there anybody in fire, fire or police that could could run a training? If there were, if there were town employees or say elected officials that wanted to learn how to use this? And is there a is there a opportunity to have a class like that?
Yeah, I have a career lieutenant and an on call firefighter who are both instructors. So we can, yeah, we could arrange classes actually. Lieutenant's done some classes first. Teacher, somebody.
Okay.
Did some some classes for him.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All good? I think so.
Anybody have any other questions to the chief?
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
All right, thanks, chief.
Have a good evening.
Dave, you're going to take care of all four of these, police dispatch, emergency management and animal control? Can you? All right, that's what I thought.
We can both do.
Yeah, well, that's like, that's what I figured. You have the you have the squirrel, so. Right.
So you got police up there right now? All right, so salaries are all contractual. So they're basically step step increases, 2% COLAs. The step increases are just for years on the job. We have five steps. It's those people jumping up to the top steps. So that's that's pretty straightforward. I think it showed a 4% in there, but that's because the previous year wasn't calculated, so it's actually.
This is a great segue. Thank you, leading right into it because this question is going to come up a lot. And so there are two additional tabs in here for curious minds. Please keep in mind that we have tried to hide and lock actual names. Okay, but there is a line for every position in the town with the department, the hours, how much they got for an increase, what the new rate is, the calculation for weeks in the year, what their salary is, any stipends they're going to receive and their total, right? Because you will see different percentage increases because these positions are going to be allocated on all different lines now in the budget. But the most common question we get asked or comes up is, well, what did everybody get? And why did they get so much? And so this I put this little timeline together to sort of help people understand why it seems like we keep doing this issue. So in FY 21 for the 22 budget, it passed and it was accurate, right? Passed July. May 10 of 22, which is almost into 23, right? The board gives an additional adjustment, which was these amounts here, this 4222. So that means that the budget that's passed at May 5th, the town meeting is already outdated, right? That data is now outdated, right? So those numbers are not correct. So then we just did transfers at STM to get everyone up to the correct rate and put the right amounts in their salary lines. And so now for 24, the correct rates will be in the budgets caught up to where we were. But you can see over time that the main question is everyone got the same amount that was awarded by the select board. If it was not awarded by the select board, different amounts might have been given, but the select board gave the same amounts to everyone else. So any other percentage changes, like he's saying, are step changes or new hires or position turnover that everyone receives the same. But if someone has a specific question about an individual person per se, well, there's a list in here for everybody's salaries, every single one. And public safety is also on the bottom in case anyone is curious.
So on the spreadsheet, I think it showed myself and Andrea 4%, but that's because the 2% for May wasn't in, so it's not really a 4%. I think the total budget shows like a 3.6 in my salaries, but that's the 2%. And in the step increases, the night shifts, it always sees all the stipends that go along with the net and that average salary increase. And that's really for salaries. Quinn bill was a short adjustment. Again, that's based on once the salaries go up, Quinn goes up. It's been pretty stable though, because we've moved to an educational incentive for the people who don't receive Quinn. So that's that doesn't change every year. Only the Quinn does and it's half the department level Quinn now, so that will slowly start going down. It won't go down completely. It'll go down to the new educational incentive that's contractual at the time unless it changes with the new contract. I did ask for 4,000 extra in overtime and the only reason meaning for that is the holiday, the Juneteenth holiday. If I backfilled all of the days, it would cost me $7,500. What I did is I figured I have to fill all the midnights when they take them because we only have two. So I have to fill those. On 4 to 12 in day shift, I have a rotation where. Um, on four to twelves in day shift, I have a rotation where, uh, weekends I would have to fill, weekdays I don't, so it's hard to figure out when I would have to do that. I just kind of came up with an average and I rounded it up to four thousand instead of asking for the seventy-five hundred because I know it's truly won't, I wanted to backfill every single one. Um, so.
Well, you just brought up another good point. There's also an extra day because there's leap day next year. So not, these are not straight fifty-two weeks. They're all fifty-two point two eight, so that will also throw the percentages off. So we had to budget for an extra day.
So really, my only request is the overtime. I didn't do a sheet for it because it was pretty self-explanatory to tell you. I mean, I need to absorb it some way. I was hoping that I could absorb it just with a boost in the overtime since it was an unexpected day that was given last year. And then after that, we're going to the expenses and all the expenses are level funded right now. And they are level service, so I was able to see some efficiencies. Uh, we had tasers that dropped off this year. We go on a five-year program with them. We purchase them, then we own them outright after year five. I'm going to be able to get a year out of them, but the way this purchase program works, by the time you get them, they have a new one. And the old cartridges don't, aren't compatible anymore and the old tasers aren't warranted anymore or compatible. So I'm going to go into new five-year contract and don't charge interest on them or anything like that, but I can get one more year out of this contract and I want to make sure they're at a transition stage. I don't want to get into a five-year contract and know in two years these are outdated. You know, I want to get into the new ones. So that's why I have a year leeway. I'm saving about six thousand there. That offsets my gas. My gas is actually going up. I'm hoping gas stays between three and three fifty. It seems like it's leveled off the past few months. With quantitative tightening with the government, I I'm hoping, you know, the slowing inflation and and gas, gas and fuel should stay somewhere around there. I can't see fuel going through the roof again, um, as long as the Fed keeps raising the rates every month.
So this is another good segue because I know this comment has come up. So the department has a variance change that's a request or a significant change. They have uploaded backup support data into a folder. Many departments do not have any changes to their budget besides contractual salary increases, so they will not have additional backup data in here unless there is something specific in their budget that you're looking for information on outside of salaries. If you're looking for salaries, they're right on that tab. So like for a department like this where it's level service, there isn't a document that's going to be uploaded in here to review. It's, you know, maybe they, like I put some in that were like calculation data around insurance because that's more interesting than it is, you know, but something like that. But for the most part, for most of these departments, if there's not a change, you're not going to see something here.
What do we do with the old tasers?
Can't get the cartridges for me anymore.
Next year, though, I I always like to give you a heads up. Um, I will be going back and requesting next year. We're going to have the new tasers. If inflation keeps going up, which it doesn't seem like it is, I mean, I'll have inflation costs that I won't be able to control. Um, I won't be able to offset them. And then the big thing that's going to concern me now is cruisers. Um, I was able to get the car. I drive the electric car on a grant. We get fifteen thousand off and then another seventy-five hundred off when we traded in a car. Um, but at the same time, I was pricing out hybrids and the current interceptors. And when I got this round of cruisers that we have now, um, in two thousand seventeen, I was paying an average of thirty-eight, five to outfit and complete car. Um, the current cost right now is over fifty-two thousand dollars.
For a hybrid or for a?
Um, the, the hybrid is actually a little bit cheaper because we get a grant. Um, the regular ones are fifty-nine thousand, so hybrids actually cheaper. It's like fifty-two, five.
We're going to be looking to get a lot more grants.
That you're sixty-four.
So my fifty-four is usually based on grants and back then we weren't paying anything for interest. So now I have to start looking at the way I finance them also because we used to do municipal loans and the financing was next to nothing.
Right.
And the last time I looked, we're looking at like seven percent for municipal.
You either kill inflation, raise the rate.
Raise the rates, but that kind of ruined my replacement plan because my replacement plan was getting, you know, low interest, you know, half a percent, a percent. Putting it off for five years, replacing four cruisers at a time and getting into an payment. Now I can't possibly do that. It's wasting money. I'm not going to pay seven percent on a, on a vehicle. So I I'm looking at now, I might just, if I can get the cruisers to last, try to replace like one and a half a year. How that may sound like a cruiser and a half. So, uh, well, and by that I'd replace one at the beginning, say July, and then I would use the other half to float in between, you know, and then replace another one. Um, you know, buy the cruiser, um, in one year and then the next year I pay for all the outfitting. So I I'd have half a car in June and I'd be able to finish that out of half in July and buy the additional. I I think that's going to be the only thing that financially makes sense. I I can't see paying the interest on 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 these vehicles. It's just a waste of money, so.
Paid like with the trackless?
Before it was almost like free, but now it's, it's a big.
Especially now.
So I I don't know if the sixty-four will last. It might turn into seventy-five.
It's here.
You actually have to start looking at a range, so we're not surprised. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, and just track to that.
Yeah, by after a year.
I'm surprised as anyone.
And I'm also debating too. Um, it depends how in, uh, to do a group community.
We need to refinance that.
I may sprinkle in an electric car into the fleet here. The vehicle I'm in, I took it just to test it out. Right now, my vehicle wouldn't make sense to sprinkle into the fleet. I had three hundred miles on a charge in the summer and now with the winter, not even using the heat. It's funny because someone comes in, I say, shut the heat off. Like, ideally put it on, don't turn the heated seats on. I don't even know why it has heated seats because they drain the battery. But I'm going to two hundred miles on a charge and sometimes less. So for for a frontline cruiser, that wouldn't make sense. They can't, they can't drive around with no heat and with the radios and the computers and everything else. But as as they're getting better, the Ford Lightnings are not available right now. There's a four hundred mile range on that. So if that dropped to three hundred and we get it municipal pricing, I might sprinkle those into it because long term that would save money in the fleet. There's no maintenance.
They have a four hundred mile range with the heat, with with all those radios.
They don't. It would, it would drop down in the winter to a three hundred.
No, they don't.
Like a three hundred, two fifty, which will be manageable in the winter.
Why wouldn't we just look at hybrids? Because it doesn't, you you need, you need that car to, and then now we got slow charge, I've got to plug it in, you know. It's not like you can just go fill up the gas station. You know what I'm saying? It's going to take time to charge.
I got you, but but the, the money we could save purchasing some of, so I'm not saying the whole fleet, but there's no reason with sprinkling something like, you can get a Ford F-150. I know, um, actually Mark Reel talked about it. They got one in, um, where he works and they ended up paying thirty thousand after the grants. So if I can pay fifteen thousand less on a cruiser like that, um, and sprinkle it in and maybe make it a supervisor's car instead of a frontline car. And there's a supervisor on every other shift where they can plug it in. Um, and now we're saving on the fuel. Um, they do the comparison of the fuel. It's, it's equal to if you've got a hundred miles gallon, you know.
And there is a, there is a big variance between manufacturers and what.
Yeah.
And how fast they can charge and how long the battery lasts and.
Yeah.
But that, but that is a real problem with that, with those trucks about that.
Oh, we're having the other.
Yes, right.
Yeah.
When you start, and if you were, not that we were towing, but if you start towing.
Oh, yeah, and that's why I'm the, I'm the guinea pig for it right now. I don't, I don't mind being the guinea pig for it. Um, I do find that this vehicle I have to manage. I have to know, you know, if I'm going to a conference or somewhere, is there a charger there? Um, in the summer I didn't worry about it. I could go all over the place, but now it's, it's, I'll drive to Northbridge to go see the Northbridge chief or something and come back. And it says I went twenty miles round trip and I didn't, you know, it it's just, it's weird. It's, it's, but Anne really wanted it. She's been asking for a long time and I said, you know what, let's, let's do it. Let's try it out. You know, I mean.
Just swap them all out.
It's outside the box. Let's try something different. Let's see if it works. Um, but again, it wouldn't be frontline. It would be supervisor's car, detective's cars.
I get it. I just want to be careful with it. That's all.
Yeah, frontline.
There's a lot to talk about it. There's a lot of people excited about it. But practicalities.
It's not ready yet. It's not, it's not ready yet.
Frontline is not ready, but we have more than frontline. So that's the thing. If we can utilize the other, other cruisers and not, and not, you know, spend the gas we spend on them. Um, because they get fourteen miles to the gallon. And hybrids get twenty.
Curious.
You know, they get horrible mileage.
Yeah.
Um, so, but again, that was just, we're off track. That was kind of just about the cruisers to try to.
That's why we're here.
To grow a creative way to ensure we control the fleet so we're not, that sixty-four doesn't turn into eighty-five thousand and see a huge jump.
When does dispatch come back if that was possible?
Wait, what, what, let's.
You got a question?
And then.
Dave, just real quick.
Yep.
The computer, I'm assuming this computer maintenance contract is very specific to hardware, software that's specific to the police.
Yes, it's contractual stuff. Um, yeah, it's our software vendors. It's, um, everything's wrapped into that, uh, Signet with our security system. With the the contracts we have for cameras, the alarms, the maintenance, the body cameras. It's all a contract. It's all contractual.
With specific vendors.
Yes. Um, and again, we're in, we're in contracts with most of those now too.
Single source too, right?
No, not I'm seeing, but in the future, once those contracts run out, like we just signed a new Signet contract for three years. Um, they went up, but I negotiated to get them down if we signed a three-year contract. But it just, they're, the services are really starting to get hit. Like we had, we found a camera over there and I've been waiting since last May for it. And they told me maybe they'll, they'll be coming in April. Um, it's a camera and a key system for the cell block. Because what we ran into was if we have someone in the cell block, um, and we don't have dispatch now and there's two people in there and they're fighting. There's no way you're getting in there from the outside. So I've created a keypad system so local PDs can come in, get the code from dispatch, plug it in quick and come in and help us.
Yeah, I mean, and the reason for my question is more of clarification for people watching. If they start looking at these line items that sound similar.
Yeah.
And they see them in every department, they're going to say, why? Why do we have so many different computer contracts? In fact, we need to.
Yeah, and again, we just named it that. I mean, we could name, the the naming has always been so weird, always.
Something else anyway.
Yeah, and and we're trying to compact them here, um, because we just, we cover a wide variety of things if we. I mean, the breakdown, you can multi-key one to KPS and one of the new system shows you, but you go in and it breaks down all our contracts.
Yeah, so if you, if you take a look, um, you'll see in the new system, everything that's like, it's now technology and computer maintenance together in a line. So in the budgets that all the lines will still say that, but things are like contractual stuff is rolled up now, like it's all, rather than, you know, six different lines that say the same thing.
Yeah, and and it's become with the new station, it's all technology now. Uh, Nick Erskine, the corporal, he, uh, he put a list together of all the new stuff that I couldn't even believe that we have to deal with now and I negotiate the contracts for them, but it's one thing after another. I mean, the station, it it it's, it's an improvement to the town, but it added a lot of, um, maintenance for me to deal with. A lot of extra contracts to deal with. There's a lot to, Lonnie knows, he deals with the insider there. There's a lot in that station now compared to what we had to do before. You know, you used to change one filter and you consider that, that's your boiler change for the year. There's thirty filters in there now for a volatile system, so it, there's a lot in there. But, um, but we've been able to do it efficiently, so I'm proud that you've been able to do that.
You want to move to dispatch or?
Uh, which, which, you have dispatch next?
I have them both up. They're right here.
So dispatch, those are contractual, it's forty thousand contractual dispatch expenses that we currently have. Um, that will start to go up and I talked to Kim about the cycle next year. So this August, we will complete year two that's free. So the budget we're going into will get us through next year till August. So once we get into FY twenty-five, we need to budget ten months of our new, um, fee that we're going to have to pay, but our new fee is twenty-five percent of our assessment. So I won't know that until next year. They'll figure out our assessment and we pay twenty-five percent of it that year and we'll pay ten months of it. And then the following year, we have to pay seventy-five percent of our assessment. That's FY twenty-six. So we'll pay twenty-five percent for two months and then seventy-five percent for ten months.
And that's unless they, unless they change it.
Yeah, unless they change it. And then year five is where we kick in. Um, but I think the assessment, we're pretty good. I got to read the contract again. I was able to get them to do a cap for eight years, so our assessment is already capped. Um, it can't change.
Can't go up.
It can't go up at all. So I I know when I capped it, I think it must, it was around one eighty, two hundred. Um, there's no way three years from now, it's probably going to be two fifty, three hundred, but we're capped at two hundred all the way till year eight. I I wouldn't do the deal. Um, and they did it to Millville and they didn't want to do it to us. And I said, well, you either do it for Millville. If you're doing for Millville, you're doing it for us and we're not doing the deal. And they, they agreed to do it. So we're good till year eight with a cap and then after year eight.
We're in year two right now.
Yep.
So we got six years left.
Six years with a cap, the next year free still, and then twenty-five percent, seventy-five percent of the assessment and then the full assessment year, five, six, seven, eight.
Okay.
And the full assessment at the cap rate. Nine one one will kick in the rest, whatever the assessment is for us with the contract we signed.
Mike Jones, that answer your question?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I was coming back around.
Yeah, no.
So FY twenty-five.
That's going to be a big hit.
I'll have that.
Yeah, it's.
Eventually it's dumb, but but it's out there. We know it's.
It'll be a little hit next year, a bigger hit the year after.
And then a big hit yet.
But but if you amortize it out, we we will still be paying less even at the top cap that we were paying for dispatch. And we, and we do, we receive a significant increase in service. We really do. Um, besides losing, losing, um, sixteen hours unmanned there, um, what we gain is worth it. That life that was saved and the, the, the thing we had back in May where that life was saved, that was dispatch walking through it and that. I I know a hundred percent if we had our dispatcher, I don't know how that would have turned out. Like, you you just can't do all that at once. And that person, they were able to pull a dispatcher aside and work them through CPR, that person, so.
The, the facility is pretty amazing, the way that it's set up by the, and viewed it, the, they have a, a three lines of, of defense of dispatch, right? I mean, I don't want to call it defense, but those calls that come in, then as they, they escalate through the rows and and they're manned, they're fully, you know, manned with people. Um, and, you know, specifically certain people, a call comes in, oh, this person knows how to handle these calls better. They just send it right to that person. And so you're getting that, you're getting, I think it's six dispatchers are there at all times.
Seven now when they supervise.
So seven plus supervisor, so there's, to be able to have that.
And the first two people in that line just answer calls. They don't have dispatch.
Right.
Always answer calls and then they get it to the people they need to get to.
It it's true. I mean, i- if you, if you ever able to go into, you know, Boston or Providence or Worcester and see the, the room and the, and the depth that they have. We've got that same thing now because we've got all these departments that are all regionalized together, so they're, we get the same kind of service.
Other departments are looking at it now too. They'll say, why are you doing this? It doesn't make sense, you know, because there were only a few at the time. And we gave up our regional dispatch, but now everybody's looking at it. There's grants for it.
Yeah.
They're all going that way and it's.
It's, you know what? It's irresponsible, just what you talked about, Lonnie, with the depth and the, it's irresponsible not to.
Yeah.
It really, it really is.
So dispatch, level funded, nothing's going to change this year with it. And you have civil defense, emergency management. That's exactly the same also. That's the stipend in there and the grant that we get to upgrade things for civil defense. That's, that's level funded. Nothing's changed with that. And then.
I can take this.
ACO is pretty easy. I sent you the email. It's contractual. We don't have a choice on how much we pay them.
Yeah, so it's, it's gone up because a year or so ago, you might recall, we talked about it, like they were, um, it basically doubled the amount of service that they provide and included additional communities. And then bought additional vehicles and so basically have turned it into a real operation rather than just Kevin and the pound in Blackstone. So, um, unfortunately, you know, with that does come cost. I've saved the letter that we received that basically is the assessment for it. That includes the budget and then our share of it in the, um, support folder in case anyone has any questions or is curious about how that breaks down for us. Based on population is how we pay our percentage. Last year, we did receive as part of this group a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in grant funds to offset the cost, which is why it didn't hit us this year. So it's hitting us next year.
So, so they. Oh, so I'm sorry. I see what you're saying. We had a hundred and thirty thousand last year in grant money.
Right. We basically paid the same as we paid in previous years last year, but got to upgrade all the stuff, right? And now we have to pay the full.
And then we share with six towns. It's a, it's three officers and.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, and any issues you have with it, um, there's not much to manage with the budget. We just get a bill. But I do deal with Chief Montney and, um, the ACO in general, so if you have any problems with the board, I know we've had in the past, you just get me involved. I've got a topic.
Right, the town of Oxbridge administers the program. That's.
And I'm the liaison that deals with any issues here in case, in case we have problems, which we have. And, you know, Kevin sometimes is dragging his feet, but he's been good about it lately.
He's good.
He does a good job, you know, but I think that.
He does a good job, but the job itself.
Yes, the job.
Terrible.
And he's got a lot to do. I think it's a new, it's a new transition. He's managing six towns, so it's tough to do and sometimes he forgets things, you know.
You think you have a problem dealing with people's kids?
I know.
Dogs.
Sad.
I think that's it for all my budgets. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Good.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Hopefully next year will be as easy when I ask for a lot of money.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you, Chief.
All right.
Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, any.
About the budget in general before?
Yeah, just, Kim, there's a couple of large negative bogeys that are, that could be good. I just want to confirm like the, the tree is down thirty. And there are two school, uh, building numbers that are zeroed out that are large.
Right, so their debt is off. So their debt is off, right? I actually, that somewhere also in here is another one. Um, so I know people are always interested in this. Let me see what I saved. Um, because we want to start planning for the senior center, right? So, um, we're not even debating what we're planning for. It just is. So, um, these are what we have remaining for debt, because we can just do the debt service budget right now, right? So, um, this is what it looks like. It's going to drop down right here. So this might be a good, like, you know, initial, the first year where we take the, um, the ban out, like the short loan in order to do the planning. And then this is when it's going to kick in right here. So be great to finalize on something in here. And then coordinate with the school on what their timing is around theirs. Um, but yeah, it's our debt service has been, it's pretty constant, but the schools is off for this year. So. And then the tree warden. So Ted and I were texting about it. That budget that's in there right now is the the budget from before, right? We're still in that weird window of sorting out. What, what's what, right? So he got the additional funding at the STM to do the additional work. He's having trouble getting contractors lined up, which is what we had heard before. Um, he's going to come in and talk about his budget. Um, but basically he's cool with it being level for now. And I think that's again, more of, it's unknown. The data points are unknown.
But the 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 reduction is actually the increase. It's sort of the reversal of the increase we just got.
Yeah, right.
Let me think of any other ones that we could just fire off quickly. I know everyone wants to go. Um, we already talked about that. I mean, this is, these are the ones we just talked about. Health insurance, I'll know after this weekend. They give me the number at the MMA. They make a big deal about it. It's like the worst presentation. Um, these are all constant. Um, liability insurance, we're locked in for two years. Um, this police and this fire is also constant. Uh, Medicare is the same, depending on the number of retirees in the actual pool. And then unemployment is unknown, right? It's always an estimate based upon actual claims. Um, and then workers come, but I have a lot of information, tons of information about benefit data, if you guys want to get into it. But we don't have to do that tonight. Um, that one other thing you might be interested in, if you're scrolling in here by yourself in the next couple of weeks, um, even though we haven't got into the other new budgets yet. Um, this is what the positions allocations will look like going forward within the new system. Like I have moving positions to different departments now, right? So if you remember, for those who weren't here before, we used to have this one category called Town Hall. That's one of them, one ninety-nine, in which eight positions were all just grouped in there. So any like random. So now they are actually correctly allocated to the right department in which they belong. Inspection services or planning or in some cases both, right? If they do a dual, if an admin is a dual role for both. And so those, the way, so you can see that the numbers align and where the money sort of went to is all tracked here. So that way we know everyone is getting paid and that they where they now will be paid from, right? So like for health, for instance, now you'll actually see an employee, right? You'll see a portion of an employee's salary there. So that is new. It's probably the most confusing part of this whole new budget process. But it's here in case somebody starts to get curious about, well, why is this one fifty percent? And you don't know, like, we're not here to answer it. Track it here. It's probably because these positions moved there. And then, um, we'll also have a thing that tracks FTEs right with it once we get that that level in the system.
It's nothing, nothing left in there for employees in one ninety-nine.
No, there is no, so.
There is no one ninety-nine.
Listen, that's why I was kind of having a panic a couple of weeks ago, you know, like sheer terror. So if you look on this page, the budget lines, one ninety-nine no longer exists. There's nothing here anymore, right? And it was a catchall of all different kinds of things. And so I've like, in addition to allocating everyone to the correct places, you know, just consolidating these lines. So most of one ninety-nine is now split up into three places. Um, the selectmen's budget, right? Has like one twenty-two, which used to basically just be stipends and a couple of things, is now a real substantial budget because that is your administrative budget. Um, and then, like I said, we now have, um, a human resources line specific to that. And we have an IT line specific to everything that's technology. And then we also have, like I said, one ninety-two, which is public buildings and property maintenance, which is where I think the future, you know, some of this goes. So, um, that's how they're, that's where they all go to when we.
I'm going to leave something in one night. I'm just for historical purposes.
And I mean, I don't even want to see it still in the system. Like, there's so many dead, that, and there's so many. I mean, without, again, what used to happen in K V S is they had the system for so long that it, like, anytime they added something new, they would add a brand new line. So we had these departments with duplicate lines for the same exact thing that might have been added ten years apart, but it's still in there. So when you open it up, there's twenty-five lines that you're only using three of. And so, I mean, these lines here is is me manually removing the lines. If this was just printed out from the thing, like you would see hundreds and hundreds of lines that have zeros in them or no purpose. And so sort of getting rid of those and then getting it as simple as possible for budgetary purposes. And also for transparency, like at town meeting, like it's pretty straightforward what, you know, what's in contractual services. It's a contract, you know, for X, Y, Z. So hopefully this will help people sort of be able to manage the departments, manage their budgets a little bit more and also.
A little more understanding too, I think, for everybody else.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I just, it's was a long time coming. So, you know.
Sure. Highway surveyor.
Yes.
Zeroed out. Should we put, are we going to put a placeholder in that?
So I already have. Uh, so for the highway surveyor, two things are happening. Um, in the highway, but, um, a couple of things are actually happening in that in that department. Because, uh, so to answer your quick question, where they are down here, public works and facilities, okay? So before we used to have like four twenty-one, which was road machinery. We had highway construction and maintenance. We had snow and ice, right? We had all these lines. They actually now are all, the everything that is highway, public works is in this one line here, public works and facilities, right? So the employees are there and the costs related to those employees are there. So for salaries in particular, I have zeroed out. Um, you know, I don't want to put anybody on blast, but that, it was compensation of about a hundred and ten thousand dollars for the existing employee. I've put ninety in the salary line for, with the rest of the employees. I put the other twenty in the reserve for negotiations because I, as we're, I'm assuming the job is.
So when I see a zero, it's accounted for in a different line.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, if we don't, when they're going to do the study, they're going to tell us, you know, hopefully it comes under a hundred. But, you know, who knows what they're going to recommend, which is another part, which is um, in our budget, which is up at the top, which is one of the requests and we'll, we'll get into it a little bit more without giving too many details away. There's a request in here for additional money for reserve for negotiations because we are looking at the reclassification potentially a couple of different positions next year as we're leading up to contract negotiations. So like, not only do we have this highway surveyor slash public works director, but whatever might fall directly underneath that from this study. And then also any potential position changes that we might want to hurry up and do with the D L S study. There's not a ton of money there, but at least we'd have somewhere to start from. If like something is like, you want to hire a public works director, they should have an assistant that does bang bang, then we're ready to go, right?
We have to keep in, keep in mind between the the divisional local services study and this public, public works study. And then with the, uh, master plan and the different departments that, you know, obviously they they put these recommendations together. Then we as a board are going to have to decide who is going to handle what. There's a lot of moving parts. That could change a lot. Hopefully we'll get some economies of scale by moving things together, but.
Right.
You know, we just, we just don't know because we're looking for the experts to 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 give us recommendations that we can kind of chew on and process.
Yeah, and like if it's possible and if there is funding that somehow does not get allocated, I would definitely, if it's available, I think you should think about taking it.
Correct.
But not, I didn't, not want to take it up front as a cash grab because it's there, like, there are other obviously priorities that might come into play. But that definitely are going to be some structural changes potentially that we're going to have to address. And some of that's going to be financial. So.
I I can't stress enough that, you know, relationships with, uh, state and even federal. We have a new congressman, um, who sent me an email to introduce themselves and, you know, there's infrastructure money. Um, you know, we're at, we were at a Eagle Scout Court of Honor when I had both the state rep and and Ryan Famon, our state senator there. I was sitting with both of them and I asked both of them. And a week later, she got both the, both the water and sewer grant and this and this one. You know, and it's even in the budget for next year already. So we just, we got to ask.
I have another earmark I want to around doors, but.
It's it's a good ti, it's the point is it's a good time to ask.
Yeah, well, when I met with the superintendent of the schools, they were talking about increasing security related to the entry points of the school. And it's something I had also been talking about with the chief related to what kind of system we could get over here, seemed excessive. But they have a time lock system in Upton that they got through a grant. And so I, having the Dave and this team put together numbers related to that. And I was thinking that's probably good.
Yeah, it's not excessive.
It's expensive. I mean, but.
But it's necessary.
Yeah, I mean, and we could do it together with the school.
So this building though?
Yeah.
It's already started. We have some of that.
Well, I just want a couple of them on the inside too.
No, honestly, and and again, the, the main system's there, but the the price, the, sorry, the expense comes in the wiring of the doors.
Dave says it's five thousand dollars per door.
That's about.
Right.
Reasonable.
Yeah, it might be an upgrade too, because I don't know if we can do it in Norret for that.
Oh, really?
Norret's good for what he does, but not the extent that we have here.
Those are different doors too. The the that system is completely, so the, there's strikers here, uh, that we were using here. Whereas, oh, there, they're actually, it unlocks the door.
An actuator with a.
It actually, it actually like you put a key in the door and then the, then you actually turn it off. Whereas these, you just push on the doors and.
Yeah, we probably only need four over here.
Well, you want to do the exterior buildings. I mean, the, at least the exterior.
Right, this one, the back. Downstairs for that conference room at night. Like automatic unlock of a door, lock.
But if you have a farm for somewhere else, the nice part is you can program that farm. So, you know.
This one does on your phone too, like when you went in our conference room, I shut it all off away from my phone.
Oh, true, right.
Yeah, right. Yeah, that's what we want.
All right. Next, next meeting, um, is scheduled for February first, account, which is two weeks from tonight. It says seven o'clock on the calendar, but we'll probably do six thirty again.
On our calendar?
Yes, I just, yeah.
So, um, I, that's why I put tentative. So I've been telling everyone budgets from seven to nine, right? Because assuming that we would meet ahead of time. As you can see, there are definitely some weeks in which we have a lot. I will, I was going to show the calendar.
Oh.
But, um, there, I I personally, like, it's even though some of it does look like, you know, like twenty budgets on a night, they're aligned, right? One line. And so, um, but I I do think that some of the nights might take a little longer than others, right? So I'm, usually what I've done in the past couple of years is I ne, I don't usually put myself, like, a lot of these budgets are mine and I'll usually just punt. Like if we run out of time, we'll just move my stuff to the end because I, or I fill it in now, like when we have time. Um, it's more important, I think, that we schedule these, like, these boards and these departments to come in at a certain time. So, um, so the schedule might not be exact, but that's what we're aiming for on those nights, right? So like tonight, if we happened, if they ran till nine, obviously we wouldn't have done anything else, right? So if we want to start earlier, go to six, move them up, let me know, right? Or if we have a long agenda on the other side, maybe then we do that six to seven and then start them, right?
But but right now it's six thirty to take care of whatever business and then budgets start at seven. That's the, that's the point.
Like I assume when the D L S finally comes in, they'll take a half an hour. When the water study guys come back in February, they're going to take a half an hour. Like, these are important.
Yeah, they may be, we may even do like we did last time with an offline meeting for the, for the water. Because there's a lot of different stakeholders than just this, that would want to come to it. It may work better. And we can always record it so people can watch it later if they want. So I have a motion to adjourn.
So move, if you say anything from the members of the FINCOM.
Right, or anybody else.
Or anybody else. Anybody have any questions that are?
Anybody?
I don't see any. All right, motion, second. All right, all those in favor? All right.
Good night, everyone.